I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our regular session of the City Council for March 21st. That's a Wednesday special. I'll ask our clerk treasurer to call the board.
Steve Johnston.
Here.
Dave Jones.
Here.
Orin Meager.
Here.
Hallie Casey.
Here.
Amy Hall.
Here.
Berto Montarros.
Here.
Milo Molling.
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And before we go on to close public comment, I want to thank everyone that came last week for the training session on Robert's Rules of Order, on the meetings and all. I appreciate the patience and the stamina everybody had to go through that. And hopefully, you've got it all anyway. We'll go now to close public comment, and this is the time for public comment on agenda items only. Is there anyone on the line or here in the room that was here for the closed public comment? Strictly on the business that's on the agenda. Seen none? We'll go on to the agenda. We have the motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and suggested to approve the agenda for the city council session and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is a presentation that's going to be given by the Recovery Navigator Program. You have it in your packet, and we'll have the team from the recovery program come forward and present. It's about 15 minutes.
Okay.
Appreciate you being here very much.
My name's Barbara Carrier, and I'm the Recovery Cafe of Clark County in Vancouver, Washington. But I'm also the director of the Recovery Navigator Program here in rural southwest Washington and Clark County. And so I have to do a little introduction first because we have a recovery cafe, a pop-up recovery cafe that we've been bringing here for almost a year. And it's been very successful, and we're looking to help the folks that have helped form the cafe locally to start a 501(c)(3) here with the Recovery Cafe. But we came here tonight to talk to you, and we'd be glad to answer some questions about that another time about the Recovery Navigators Program, which is a statewide program in the state of Washington. And I'm going to have Jim talk about that.
Okay. Should we each introduce ourselves?
Yes.
I think that was mentioned. Yeah. Did you already? Well, Barbara, you went. My name's Jim Jensen. I work at Carillon Behavioral Health. I'm a senior project manager there. I also, you probably recognize it as Beacon Health Options. The name changed this month. I also have taught in the Addiction Counselor Education Department at Clark College for about 15 years. May I introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Ari Bedo. I'm the Rule Navigator for Clickatatt and Skamania Counties for the Recovery Navigator Program.
Hi, I'm Summer Wright. I am the supervisor for the Family Navigator Program. We work with families and youth 13 and older, and we work also in Norcore with the kids in the juvenile system.
Okay. So as part of my role with Carillon, I oversee the justice system support programs in all of the Carillon regions, which is southwest Washington, north central, and Pierce regions. But I directly oversee the southwest Washington implementation of programs. So tonight, we're here to talk about the Recovery Navigator Program. What is most important to me is that you understand what it is and how it can be used as a resource. So a little bit of history just to understand what it is. Many of you may have heard of the Blake ruling, which made drugs legal for a while. And the Blake Response Bill was, the Blake ruling was a Supreme Court ruling that men's areas wasn't met by our curtain language in our simple possession law, which meant that when the Supreme Court ruled it out, that meant that simple possession was not against the law for a while. But then the legislature added some language to make sure that the simple possession was illegal. In that same bill, they funded some resources to allow for both the legislation to put into the RCWs and WACS for pre-arrest diversion, to require two diversions for simple possession before you can charge somebody with simple possession. Just a spoiler alert, it looks like that part is going away with this next legislative session. You're never for sure in the legislative session, but it looks like those two mandatory diversions are going away. But still, the language will be that it's recommended and allowed to do diversions for simple possession. And when I say simple possession, I'm talking about possession of controlled substance, possession of counterfeit substances, and possession of prescription, you know, not your prescription substances. So the question always is for programs that offer, allow, and recommend diversion, in this case, law enforcement diversion, and we're open as well to take pre-charge diversion. The question is divert to what? Because if we're going to say, hey, you know, we want to get you connected with some services, and as the law is written now, you're not allowed to charge somebody. We need to divert you to services. The question is where are they going? Do we hand them a business card of the local treatment facilities? Do we try to connect them? Well, the program that was implemented was called the Recovery Navigator Program. So that was implemented across the state, and Recovery Cafe is the organization that provides the peer navigators for the Recovery Navigator Program. What the Recovery Navigator Program is, is a field-based, peer-led program. So that means that if we get a call from law enforcement, then the navigators will come out and meet with people, will work with them to get them connected with the resources they need, try to get them connected to care, to housing, to treatment, all of the services they need. So there's a few things about the Recovery Navigator Program that I want to make sure you're aware of. It is legislated and written exactly into standards and practices to be a harm reduction program. Don't let that scare you. That just means that people can't suffer consequences for engagement. So it's different than, let's say, a drug court or therapeutic court where they say, do this or else. The way the Recovery Navigator Program is, is that while internally and with the peers, we can hold folks accountable, they can't suffer increased charges for lack of engagement with us. They can only be referred to us, and we try to help them. So that is one of the things you should be aware of. What I'd like to do is leave some time first for some of the navigators to share a little bit about your program and to tell me the story, a success story. And then I want to answer any questions that you all have with the time remaining.
So I started as a Recovery Navigator in November of 2022. And I'm someone who comes from a long background of trying to help people, you know, with housing or other jobs in the community that I've held. And I really think that the Recovery Navigator Program is going to be a successful one because I've seen many things come in and out of the system, in and out of our community. And this seems to be the one thing that people are actually excited about and that they're talking about. I just had a probation officer reach out to me and say, I had somebody that said that they have had great success with you, and I want to start collaborating with you and seeing how we can start working with you to, you know, see what you can do for them so we can avoid further consequences to them. Because it feels like it's just a revolving door of, you know, we keep just giving them more charges, and it's not getting to the root of the problem of what they're needing. So that's what the Recovery Navigator Program does. It's a peer support program that comes in and says, hey, like, I've been where you're at. I've been down to rock bottom, and I've built myself back up. And now I'm here to help you and show you that it's possible to do that too. You know, I'm here to give you that hope that, you know, rock bottom isn't the only thing that's there for you. There's hope. There's something else out there. And, you know, I'm not a social worker that's going to sit here and tell you that you need to do it this way, and this is how you do it, and this is how you're going to be successful. It's coming from someone who has literally walked in your shoes. And that seems to mean a lot to them. You know, they don't have this authority that's over them, you know, telling them how they should do things. It's how do you want recovery? How can I help you? How can I navigate you? What is your goal? You know, a lot of people have never been asked that when they're in recovery. What is your goal? And that's such a simple question that they've never been asked. So that's what we do. We navigate them to resources and get them recovery in the way that they want it. We had someone come to us that was referred to us that came from a very extensive background of alcoholism. And, I mean, he was very beat up, you know. I mean, he came from a very traumatic childhood, turned to alcohol as his coping mechanism, and felt like there was no hope. And it took a few times. You know, it wasn't the first or the second time for that individual to get clean. And we stick by them. We say, you know, you fell down, let's get back up, let's try again. You know, that's what we're there for. So it took him a few times to get clean and get where he wants to be. But, I mean, he did it. And he told us, he's like, I just felt like it was successful because you weren't some 12-step program book that was trying to pound something into my head. You were somebody that understood where I'm at and walked with me. So that's just the most important piece, I think, of this work that we're trying to do for the community.
Summer? What are you doing up here? In Clickatatt County and Golden Dale?
I'm going to piggyback off of her. I also come from a clinical background, and I have to say that since joining the Recovery Cafe, it has completely converted me because of all the success I've seen. The amount of people they help in one day, I couldn't get done in two weeks because everything is in a little box. And here, it's much more custom to what the person actually needs. But so what I do the most is I work in the justice setting. So for something that has to do with Golden Dale the most is every Friday, I go to Norcore. I actually just came from there. And I work with the kids for Clickatatt and Skamania County. And when I first started working there, all the kids in there come from not the greatest background, and they all identified as, I'm a criminal, I'm a felon, I'm an addict, I'm a gangbanger. So I've been going there for about five months now. And now every kid that I work with no longer identifies themselves as that. They identify themselves as one wants to be a counselor, one wants to be a doctor, one wants to be a barista, one wants to be a mechanic. So they all have these goals in mind. And every week, we kind of touch on like, how can we, what's one step to achieve that goal? And the one thing that they all have mentioned is no one's ever asked me that question. No one's ever asked me like, what do you want to be in life? Because everyone's told them, you're a troublemaker. You're going to stay like this forever. You're going to continue using drugs. So just coming in and giving them that little support has been the biggest thing. And now we're working in the community with the kids that are getting released. And I go to the high school every week to meet with one of the kids. And one day, he wasn't there, and his probation officer was looking for him at the same time as I was. And he was like, I introduced myself. And he was like, oh, no, I know who you are. He talks about you all the time. And he's like, you must make a difference because he doesn't remember anything. For you, he talks about. And I think it's just that one piece of showing up and just being supportive. But in the last six months, I've seen such a huge difference with all these kids. And I think if we can continue to grow this program here, which is what we're working on, specifically for the youth, we're going to kind of make a huge difference.
Well, maybe one more clarifying statement about the Recovery Navigator Program is that we do take diversion referrals. We take what's called a social contact referral. That's when law enforcement sort of just sees somebody and goes, oh, that guy looks like he needs some help, but I got another call to go to. So we take diversion referrals and social contact referrals, and all law enforcement referrals are priority. But if, you know, we usually do, whatever capacity we have left, we take community referrals as well. That could be any of you or a treatment facility or walk-in. Anybody can refer to our program as well. And currently, we have capacity to be able to take those referrals in addition to any law enforcement referrals. Question? Yes, sir?
My question is just to let the council know that we do have referral material. All officers do. And if we run into somebody that these folks can help, we have immediate access to call for them or give them the information they want. It's up to them. You know, but so we do have that. And they've reached out to us, so all officers are equipped with referral material.
Thanks, Jim.
What I'd like to say is, so we have this money. And we're going to spend it in Clickatatt, in Clickatatt County, and Skamania County, and Clark County. We want to bring it to the community, but we also, if we're bringing this program to the community, every community does things a different way. And I've learned that going back and forth up the Dow Gorge. So for Clickatatt County, we need to form a policy board of folks who can help set policy for how the Recovery Navigator Program should work in Clickatatt County. So I'm trying to drum up some people to be on that policy board. Because it's important that it's done the way you want it done, not the way, you know. All the bureaucrats in the state want to do it all different ways, but this is your community. So that's what I'm trying to do here tonight, is make sure that we get a policy board going that meets once a month to talk about how the referrals are going to come in, what the navigators are going to provide, how much time it takes them to get to a referral. There's a lot of different policies that need to be decided. So that's what I'm here to do, and these folks are here to work. They do wonderful work, I want to tell you. All the navigators do wonderful work. The success stories that we have from Clark County, Skamania County, Clickatatt, now White Salmon. So this is a growing program, and I'm really happy about it. Because so many times, like Ari said, there's a lot of labeling and stigma that comes with addiction and mental health issues. But people can, and they do recover. I'm 32 years in recovery, so I know they can. And so my passion is working with peers because I've seen peers turn their lives around and get a lot back.
On this policy board, policy board, excuse me. Who are you looking for? Have you reached out like to the sheriff's office, KPH?
I know how Carmen's going to be. Carmen's, I've already talked to Carmen. She's already told me that we should have it during the week. And she's going to reach out to the judge and the prosecuting attorney. But we still need a few more people to be on that board.
I think James Tuning from KPH.
Yeah, James Tuning is, of course. Yes, James is. And maybe Larry. He hasn't committed yet, but there are some people that are committing, yes.
And you're the chief of police if you would like to be involved.
Don't leave until I give you one of my cards.
Okay, okay, good. Wonderful. So we're excited because we just found out we were going to expand the cafe here also. And that's exciting. That's exciting for us and exciting for this community.
I walked into, excuse me, I walked into the Recovery Cafe. Jeff Ray, our code enforcement officer, told me about it. And then after I'd met a fellow that slept in a sleep and lives in his pickup truck and traded parts, he was going there for lunch, so I went down to spend some time there. You can feel it when you walk through the door. There's hope there.
Yeah, we have some people in your community that have come in the building that could not stay over five or 10 minutes in a place that was a social place. And now we have to run them out so we can go home. I mean, it's very, that's, and we don't give up on people. That's the premise of the Recovery Cafe model, is that we don't give up on people. We walk them through all the errors they need to make on their way. But they have to make decisions and suffer errors and grow. And that's the only way they can grow is by making those decisions and having somebody walk beside them.
A couple of questions. What qualifies for the Recovery Cafe? Like, what are your qualifications? Or what kind of help do you guys offer? Or do you what individuals you guys offer? And then also, can you talk more about the actual process to make community referrals for adults and juveniles? How do we actually get that information out and just know you guys exist?
I can answer the question about the cafe, and Jim can answer the question about the program.
Sure.
So for the Recovery Cafe, the only things that a person has to do is, it's a membership-only cafe, so that keeps it safe. So people have to join and become a member. And to become a member, they have to be clean and sober for 24 hours before they can come to the cafe. They have to attend a recovery circle once a week. And recovery circles are not AA meetings or NA meetings or Smart Recovery. They are a circle that they go to every week with the same folks. And they don't talk about their using or their trauma and all that. They talk about what their goal is to move forward. We don't look back, move forward, and how the cafe can help you. And then they have to give back by working, you know, doing dishes or whatever they need to do to give back in the cafe. And right now, I met with eight cafe members last week that want to be volunteers and start the cafe here. And eventually, they'll probably be hired.
What kind of situation do the individuals need to be in to qualify for the cafe? Is it just drug addiction, alcohol? I mean, alcohol?
They have to be, well, we started a drug addiction and alcohol. But we do have people that have come in with some mental health issues, many of them, because, you know, 90% of them are co-occurring. And we have some DV people who have come in from domestic violence. So, you know, people are recovering from a lot of different things, a lot of different things.
So just to clarify, the Recovery Navigator Program has different requirements. So I'd like to share those just so that we don't confuse the issue.
That's why I said, I'm going to say that.
I can feel more questions coming, and I want to make sure we. So the Recovery Navigator Program, we prioritize law enforcement referrals, but I think you're asking about a community referral. If you see somebody out there in the park and you're like, that guy looks like he's in trouble. I want to call somebody. For the Recovery Navigator Program, there has to be a possible substance use disorder. We don't need a diagnosis. We don't need an issue, just a suspected issue with substances. And so that's a pretty broad net. And then the way you make a referral is you simply call and say, is this the Recovery? The phone number's on there. Is this the Recovery Navigator Program? There's a guy, I don't know his name, he's sitting on the bench. Can somebody get out there? I mean, that's obviously, you'll probably know more in most cases. But for the Recovery Navigator Program, the requirements are very, very low for that engagement. And then for continued engagement, it's different than the cafe. Because it has that harm reduction legislative requirement, you don't have to be a member or anything. The navigator will continue to come and meet with you and get you connected with services throughout. That's your question?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just thinking, there's a lot of people out there that would benefit from some help but are not necessarily to the law enforcement level, which would be best to help before they get there.
We've taken some referrals from different places here in Clickatatt. But this is the lady that'll be billing those referrals, so.
Give cards if they can hand out if they want. Can we get some of them?
Yes, cards, yeah.
I think we've called you out twice, haven't we?
Once.
Once? Okay.
And you can also make the referral, like, you don't have to give them the info. So if you feel like there's someone that could benefit from our services, and you want us to make that warm in-person contact. Sometimes that goes a long way rather than, here, you know, call this number. Sometimes that in-person, you know, Jay can be like, hey, you know, this is this individual. She's here to help you. And that kind of gives it that warm handoff where, you know, if they trust Jay or, you know, they know they could be facing some repercussions if they don't work with us. I mean, he's kind of there to give that warm handoff and that in-person contact can be a lot. We could take him either way.
How large will this policy committee be or policy board that you're talking about?
Well, we'd like to have the leaders in the community, however many you. It's going to be your policy board, so it's going to be up to this policy board. So what usually happens with the policy board is the group will meet, and then they'll figure out who else should be there and start inviting them. And then, because it forms unorganically for you guys.
There's so many families that have one or several members or have themselves been involved in addictions that are so incredibly hard to break away from.
It's a family disease. It is a family disease.
It's across generations, and it's cyclical, in and out of jail. And so really, we're trying to break the cycle. So if we get somebody in the community before you guys have to show up, great. If after you show up, you think that they'd be better off with the navigator, great. If, you know, prosecutor wants to send them our way instead of charging them, great. We're really here to kind of break that chain wherever possible.
We have had contact where they wanted the information, and word has gotten around some. But, you know, they don't want to talk right now, but they did take the information. So we do run into that a lot, too.
We've looked up in that in Clark County, and the officers, the neighborhood officers started staying with the person until we got there because they would leave. And so we just got there faster. So the policy board is important to, I mean, that was a policy that the Vancouver PD put in is that they would have an officer stay with them until we got there. So it's just whatever serves your community the best.
So is this policy board, I know you talked about like the sheriff's office, the prosecutor's office, which to me seems like all law enforcement. And that's, is this policy board just that or members of the community or family members that would like to join? Is it open or is it going to be one of those, the legal people are going to be forcing everything down?
No, we can't, it's, we have a well-rounded policy board in Clark County. We have treatment providers, we have family members, we have different, we have some navigators. We have the sheriff's office, the police department, treatment providers, mental health treatment providers, housing providers. That's another thing here. In Golden Dale, you have no recovery housing. So we have had, we have actually taken people from here because of the resources, the lack of resources, to Clark County and had our Recovery Navigators work with them there and then brought them back here when we could. And or they've stayed there in an Oxford house. So there's a real partnership all down the gorge with the Recovery Navigators working together. And I'm beating my drum every time I get a chance, the governor's office and everything for housing and recovery housing here in the gorge.
How many members do you expect to be on the policy board?
Well, that's going to be up to us.
There's no limit?
Well, I think that once we meet, if we pick this policy board and it meets, then the policy board can decide if they're going to have a limit or if there's other people that they think should be on it. So because it is your board, I can't tell you that. It's going to be your board. I'll be, you know, putting a Zoom meeting up or all that, but, and taking notes on the meeting, but it's going to be your meeting, so it's going to be, and Jim will be there.
Yeah, I think to add to that, we haven't had that problem yet. We haven't had too many people show up. So if we got to that point where we had a lot of repeated voices and not enough other voices, you know, and, you know, we would probably have that conversation in the board. I think the reason we don't have a good answer for that is we haven't had a policy board that had too many people in it yet. I think if it got up more than 10 or 15, it'd be probably hard to be an effective policy board because we have some out-of-bounds girders for the Recovery Navigator Program, but it's still kind of a baby. And so we have a lot of latitude to tailor this program exactly like you guys think we need it. You know, if we need to focus more heavily on pre-charge diversion, or we need to loosen up and take more community referrals, or whatever the policies we need can be decided locally at these policy coordination groups.
Well, the reason I ask is because I've discovered that too many members of a committee or a board say, you have too many, and it loses its cohesion. It just gets confused if you got too many. So there is such things too many. In fact, the optimum number is five to seven. If you can get the right five to seven, that's the optimum number.
If we had five to seven community members from here, and then Jim's on it and I'm on it, and maybe a Recovery Navigator, you already got 10 people, so. And we're not there to tell you what to do, but we're there to support the group. So if we get seven and there's an eight that everybody wants to really get on the board, then I guess that's what you do, don't you?
One more question. It's obvious that this program is very beneficial and necessary. You can't deny that. But is there anything in place once you've achieved your success or once you've got a person to that position of stability for them to pursue these goals, to hone their skills? Because you get to that point, because they've got to move on.
Well, the whole idea of peer services is to get Well, the, the whole idea of peer services is, is get somebody to build and support, support their own support network, whatever works for them. And then, we've had people who, they became cafe members, or they became House, Oxford House representatives. And, and then they, they just have moved on. There's always services. Recovery Cafe model, the reason we have that model is we could spend dry people in treatment all day long. Spend dry, I'm putting them in treatment thirty days, ninety days, they get out, they have no connection, no connection. There's no connection between that and helping them into long-term recovery. And it takes a long-term, long-term to get into recovery. I mean, you can't, in three months, the relapse is, you know, almost sure without a connection. So, I say, connection is the opposite of addiction. And we will stay with them as long as we need to. I mean, they may not be in the Recovery Navigator Program, but they may have a one-on-one recovery coach. They may join the Recovery Cafe. They may live in an Oxford house and join the Oxford house. I mean, there's, there's ways that, whatever works for them.
I'll also add that the Recovery Navigator Program doesn't have requirements that some treatment agencies have to discharge someone at a certain point. You can keep someone on your caseload as long as you need to. If you move them to what's called outreach status, because you're only meeting with them once a month and once every couple of months, you can't keep them on your caseload as long as you need indefinitely.
That's what we do in Vancouver. We don't really close anyone, we just kind of put them on the back burner, and we're there if they need us. But they do usually reach a point where they're being successful in living the recovery, how, how are beneficial for them. And at that point, we kind of just put them on the back burner, but we're always there, and people do reach out when they need it. And it's kind of like, what can we assist you with, what can, what can we support you with right now? And just being that person to walk along with them, and then they're right back on their way.
Well, like you mentioned, a couple of folks want to be a barista, want to be a mechanic, because their program, like I say, once they reach that level of being able to pursue that, to help them, put that to use.
Yes, that was with the juvenile kids, and yes, I do, once they say they're interested in everything, I make a complete packet of, from their community or their state, because we're not in Oregon, but I'm not gonna leave those kids hanging and not give them the support. So, whatever's in their community or gonna, like statewide for them, I do give them a resource packet of how they can achieve those goals. I'm not just like, great, that's awesome, good luck. No, I give them all the resources, and I help, some of them I've helped sign up for these resources. So, yeah, we walk along the whole path of them.
Such as further education, trade schools?
For example, I have a youth who is seventeen, and unfortunately, he is in there for a very serious charge, and could be in there for twenty-five years to life. But, his goal is to go to school. So, once he turns eighteen, there is a program for people in prison, it's a scholarship program. And as soon as he turns eighteen, in a few months, we're signing him up for that program, so he can start taking those classes to achieve those goals. Because the laws are always changing, just because he gets sentenced with something today, doesn't mean it's gonna be the same ten years down the road. And so, we want him to be, that's what we talk about every week, set up for success. And, so, like today, I brought him a stack full of counseling books, he wants to be a counselor, so I brought him things to study, little, like, trainings that he would need to take as a counselor, just to prepare himself and kind of keep him focused on it. So, once he turns eighteen, we'll be applying for that scholarship.
We continuously give them resources until there's nothing else we can connect with.
We don't do the work for them, but we're gonna help them get those things.
And you'll, and you'll see, you'll see on my card, probably, it says Recovery Cafe, Clark County, School for Recovery. So, we have different classes that come in in Clark County, and they do all kinds of things, CPR, they do, they, they help. We've helped people get their, their peer credentials from the state, or SUD peer credentials. It's, it's up to them what they want. We can give them resources and we can walk them through the process.
I think Lauren had a comment or a question?
I was curious about the duration of the policy committee. I imagine you have monthly meetings to get the policy established, but once the policy is established, are you gonna keep that going, or has it become quarterly?
Yeah, it, it will likely be monthly only until the local policies are set, and then quarterly, exactly like you said. There are other counties that kind of had a bit of a head start, and they're already down to quarterly.
Okay. So, what was the duration of the monthly meetings, you look at six months or a year?
Oh, I see. But, we, we want to lead that to the meeting. There's a meeting up in Grant County that has decided to stay weekly. They wanted to do weekly, and they have stayed weekly for six months. I don't foresee that being here, but, but we do want to create the space for what the meeting needs. We don't have a schedule, a set schedule that you have to meet. It's, it's the, the standards and practices say we have to meet quarterly. So, we want to meet a little more than that at first, so we can get to know each other and set the policies, but no, no timeline setting stuff.
With the additional hiring that we need, do you or any of the sergeants have the capacity to attend these meetings?
Me and the sergeant would, more so be, because the sergeant's on patrol. And we're at full capacity, but we're still down two, because they started the academy, they start the academy tomorrow.
That'd be great.
And we are also.
Yeah, boy, I have full intention to.
Also, sure, we, we're, we meet with officers when they have their daily briefings in Clark County, or if they have a training. So, if you keep that in mind, we do that.
We have department meetings once a month, and that's all, one of those times we go invite the folks in.
We've gone at all hours of the day. I've been there at like five forty-five in the morning to have these conversations.
Clark County's big.
We'll start at four p.m.
No, that's a lot better, because I'd have to get up a lot early.
One of the things I wanted to discuss tonight was the housing issue, and the legislation's working on some new funds for housing, so I will volunteer to participate, and would like to maintain that discussion about the housing connection.
Well, I think it's a very good program that you have here, and I'm really pleased that you've come. So, I feel like I'm pretty sure Mayor will be having a policy committee and put together, and so.
Yeah, I'm meeting with Summer and with the KVH rep this Wednesday at the cafe and then afterwards, because I just blown away when I looked at her.
I think you went out on one of our calls with our Recovery Navigators, didn't you?
I will sign up, not as a mayor, but as a community member.
And we're still working with that individual, providing them services and doing what we can, but that barrier is housing, so we're doing what we can.
And we're pushing that.
We have had Oxford come out here, too. And they're, they're trying.
And we're working with them. Annie from Oxford is, and Judy Maxwell, so all they're waiting for is employment information. We need to have some employment information here about, about COVID, so.
Thank you all so much for what you're doing, and for sharing it with us.
Well, thank you for giving us so much more time.
I just have one request, and I think maybe towards the mayor, but it would involve you guys. I think one of the questions that may be confused is more about what is addiction, and the changes and the more understanding that has become. So, I'd like if we can invite them again to come and talk to us more about what is addiction, and the process that it's not, here's your medication, you're treated, and goodbye, but it can be a lifelong process for recovery, and it's a constant process. I think that would help us understand more of what's going on, and why it's such a long process, because it is. And then, the other thing I'd like to hear more about, and maybe from the juvenile side, is aside from people being on this board, I'd like to hear more for our community on what our community can do to help us, and what organizations are there, you know, more Boy Scouts, more Explorers, there's a kid that wants to be a mechanic, is there a group that needs to tinker with stuff?
So, every other Wednesday at eleven at Father's House, we do have a meeting that focuses on youth. We actually just started last week. So, every other Wednesday at eleven, anyone who's interested in supporting a youth program, or what we're doing right now and how we're starting off, is just meeting and discussing what programs are available, and how to access that, and then what the needs are, and how we can achieve those needs for the youth. And I take any, I get a lot, the kids at the Judy and the kids that I work with in the community, they are very big with advocating for themselves on what they need and what works and what's not. So, I'm taking all that information and giving it to the community here.
If you can come back and present to us, because that's one thing that I always hear, is our community lacks on things for the kids to do. Therefore, they find their own things to do, right, and that they end up in your staff.
Yes, I've had two kids, so I've been there for five months, one has came back four times. And he's the one I'm working with in the community right now, and he is, when I first met with him in the community, he had a notebook full of goals that he wrote up all by himself of what he wants. He also wrote up what his barriers are, all on his own. And so, he is very dedicated, it's just he needs some support and he needs direction, and just someone to like walk with him on that path.
And I think our community, because it goes back to the whole, it takes a community to raise a child, right?
Yes.
So, what are we going to do as a community to help, other than be here and hear you guys?
I'm sure Summer can come back with some people from that group, and I know you said you're meeting with James Tooney. James Tooney, it would be an excellent resource, I mean, I'll come back, and we can bring somebody back to talk about addiction itself. I mean, he teaches, he's taught it for many years, but, yes, so.
We'll organize a update, a regular update for City Council. Everybody is involved in following your progress, and trying to help wherever we can.
Well, thank you for giving us more than fifteen minutes.
It's way too embarrassing to stop, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. We'll go now to Department reports, we'll begin with Pat, my dinner city manager.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to report on, other than one of those guys give you an update on the incubator business building. They broke ground today, and they will be pouring, they're moving pretty quickly. They will be pouring concrete tomorrow for the play. So, they're, they get that this is a quick timeline and then meet me as quick as possible. I was, I was really impressed that they were able to get that leveled out so quick today, and get the form boards in, and had us up there by two o'clock this afternoon expecting the form boards, and we're pouring tomorrow.
They're really moving.
Wow.
Yeah. Anything else, Pat?
Other than that, well, I gotta talk about some other things on the agenda, so I'll just wait until then, so.
Okay, okay. We'll hear from our police chief today.
I don't have much tonight, other than the last council meeting, we talked about House Bill ten twenty-five, which qualified immunity. I don't know if any of you have kept up on that, but that died. So, you don't have to worry about that. So, it died in the, died in the Senate. Okay?
Thank you.
Very good news. Very good news. So, that's all.
Goodwill Fire Department, Juliana.
Not much, just, we are at forty calls for this year, and we've had a recent increase in volunteers. We are now at two thirty volunteers, and one gentleman that showed up twice, and we're beating him, bringing us to thirty-one, so.
Very good.
It's great having good turn on people.
That's good progress, yes. Thank you. Thank you. We'll go on now to council business, and I'll turn it over to Pat for covenants and development of standards.
So, in nineteen ninety-seven, with, it's my understanding, when there was a developer came in who was interested in purchasing, purchasing some of that property, there was these covenants that were created inside the industrial park that are governed by the city. That could get us, reading that and coming across that, I found that concerning, so I called our legal counsel, and he's in agreement that could cause liability risk to us. We are a code city, we have zoning ordinance that establishes setbacks, and we went through a public hearing process with the public, saying that was what we were gonna do for setbacks and standards. And then, on top of that, we created our own basically association that changes those policies on a particular piece of property. This is a civil, homeowners associations or business owner associations are a civil issue, not a legal issue. That's what could cause us the problem. There's no, and usually, these associations have a board of directors that are voted in by the members. This is not how this is set up. It's set up that the city is in one hundred percent of control, and it puts staff in a weird detriment, where our job is, is we don't enforce civil law. And this is a civil law issue that conflicts with our codes. So, how are we supposed to enforce our codes? And if there's a civil dispute, we stay out of it. We, usually how it works with a homeowners association or business association is we're reviewing any land use application to our codes for compliance. If they've had a overlay, the business owners through voted-in committee members have established their own guidelines of how they want to see that work, that's a civil issue. And we get notified of that civil issue, and then we tell those, that board, well, you need to go get an injunction to stop the work, and tell you guys have resolved your civil issue. Once we're notified of that, we, we stop reviewing it until that civil case is settled, or they've reached an agreement. In this case, it kind of leaves us in a weary area where we're supposed to be enforcing our municipal code and other codes that don't mesh well together, our policy for this division. So, what we are recommending is that this be repealed and recorded with all the lots that it has been repealed. And then, as developers buy in there, if they want to create their own standards and procedures, they can do so. That we need to stay out of that, we can't govern that. Does that make sense to you? Because it'll be private property eventually.
No, it doesn't make any sense. It's still within the city limits, what happens with our codes.
We're enforcing our codes.
Why?
We do enforce our codes, but this is above and beyond our codes.
Why?
Exactly. That's my question, why do we have it? It's gonna get, when we adopt municipal codes, we have to go through a public hearing process to do that, correct? So, what, what the city did back in ninety-seven is we have codes for the zoning. They established stricter codes without a public hearing process and overlaid that zone. That's what's gonna get us in trouble, we can't do that. We can't enforce municipal, these are not, this is not a code, this is just a, like a homeowners association, except for it's a business association history.
So, there were elements of the covenants and the standards that were beneficial, useful, long-term, we would want to bring that into our code rather than have it as a development or sessionary? Are there items in here that?
Well, it's like in here, it talks about fifty-foot setbacks, where our codes only say twenty-foot setbacks. A lot of this has to do with aesthetics, some of it about planting bushes and trees and green space.
Wall signs, I'm looking at through here, a whole bunch of stuff that.
Yeah, very complex.
But the one thing it makes very clear in here, that the attorney on both notice, there's no guidelines for setting up a civil board that's voted in by the members inside the, the boundaries of the association. You know, it, it talks about parking standards. We already have parking standards. So do we govern against this or do we govern against our own zoning? There's a conflict of interest for us.
So, right, so the question would be whether those parking standards fit for the industrial parks, because we brought in parking standards that are current along across commercial versus the industrial parks. So I'm just, my other question is, are there elements of this that we should look at incorporating into the code if you just the industrial park?
Well, I was, and that could be, I mean, I'm more glad to go more through it in depth like that and go back through the code. My concern was about the liability risk of doing this.
So my question is, what is that you need from us? Obviously, we can't have a civil order, rules, right? Association rules on top of our, our ordinance and we can pick at this and this could be a year-long process on figuring out what new ordinances we need.
Yeah.
So what is it that you need from us to get rid of this?
Well, I need, so basically, before we proceed is, I, I would, we would need to go through a public hearing process and repeal this. So before we, and, and here's a draft.
That's the copy that's in the paper.
Even though they didn't do that process to approve it?
What's that?
Even though they didn't do that process to approve it in the first place?
That's correct.
Okay.
We're going to do it right. So it's been in there long enough, no one's challenged it for, because there's not been any development up there. No one's challenged it, but, so we, we're going to go, well, the RCW requires us to re, to repeal these type of issues. So that's what we're going to follow. And basically, what I'm looking for you to do is direction, is do you guys want these repealed? And then, and if yes, then we'll move forward with notification of a public hearing at the next meeting, have these repealed. And then, once they're repealed, then we'll have that repeal recorded with all those parcels up in there and, and that'll eliminate that. On the second part, if we want, I'll try to get the Public Works Committee, I guess that would be a good, or ordinance committee, I guess, either together. Then we can look through these covenants and see if there's anything in the covenants that we want to move over into our industrial park domain.
I don't see where the city can uphold these, right, covenants, because it's not an ordinance and it's kind of conflicting and.
Yeah, we can't. It's a civil issue. We don't get involved in civil law.
Right. That, that's what I mean is unless we get into a whole civil suit with everybody. So I would move to move forward on the repealing process.
Council, it's, it's a few of your wanted addresses at the next meeting. We should get into this and start the process of repealing it and moving on with what will work for our industrial park.
Absolutely.
Yes, I agree. It's not calling for a motion, just consensus, this is what we want to do, work towards.
And Pat, we proceed with, we just mentioned.
Absolutely.
With code, code.
Yeah, we'll just get the ordinance committee together and.
Flush this out?
Flush this out really quickly. We need to move fairly fast on this because we do have the property, not all that's listed, but some of it's listed right now. And these are, some of that was very restrictive. I, I was kind of shocked how restrictive it was. I, I think we need to look at this from a city code side of what's appropriate and, like I said, and if the property starts settling off and these people out there want to create an association to manage how it develops, the purchasers, that's fine, they can do that.
So ordinance committee would have to meet prior to the next meeting then? Is that your recommendation?
Oh, we can do that, yeah.
Is that what we want to do? Can we do that?
I don't know if I can get an ordinance ready that quick.
But the discussion to start.
Okay, okay.
The plan of action needs to be.
But the, so ordinance to replace this, do not have to be in place to repeal it?
No.
With the repeal and then decide on the ordinance to come later?
But if, you know, the one thing we want to do is very quickly, before any land settles, if we want to stricten, you know, make our zoning stricter, then we need to get a draft together, get it to public hearing, go through the public hearing process and get it adopted.
Question?
Yes.
In regards to the incubator building, who owns that?
The city.
Okay, so we will be, we will be part of that as.
Absolutely.
Along with private, other private entities.
Absolutely. But we shouldn't be controlled, we shouldn't be the controlling agents.
Yeah, one, one, one portion in there was the parking. You mentioned that it's all over the place. In fact, it requires paved parking.
No.
No?
I've never heard it discussed that it has caused the, or impeded the growth in industrial park, but it's pretty obvious that would have certainly done it if people were looking at it and trying to follow that before this bought land there and scare anybody away.
Yeah, it's nice to have some set rules that you can understand.
And paved parking is kind of a challenge up there because there's not, it's pretty solid rock not too far down, from my understanding. And where are they going to send their stone water to? So if we can let it, I mean, some pavement's nice, but there needs to be some open space left or green space put in there for circulation and get rid of it.
So tonight, do we repeal?
No.
No, no. We have to go through a public hearing process to repeal it. So alls I need is direction and you guys kind of give me the direction to move forward with this. So we'll move forward with that and I'll, I'll work on getting the notice out to the paper as soon as possible. We'll probably have the notice on our website tomorrow for repealing it. And so we have as much notice out there that we're going to be conducting a public hearing on this topic and moving forward. And you never know what goes through the public hearing either. We may get comments from the public that they may have an idea we didn't think about and we may have to go back and modify some more once we hear from the public.
One thing I've found, and Pat Munyon, the City Administrator and Public Works Director, he deals with the tough problems and he gets right in the middle of them and takes care of them. It's quite a thing to see unmoved.
I try to avoid tough problems as much as possible.
I can show you avoiding steps if you've never even thought of it. But we appreciate that you do take on these problems that are very serious and not sometimes even realized by the council because they're so deep into regulations and other types of city papers.
Well, yeah, Larry told me there were covenants on it and when I, I think Sandy, you found the covenants, didn't you? Sandy found me the covenants and I read through them and that's, it, it was just alarming on how the whole thing was set up and done, that it, it put, that's why I called the attorney and sent him a draft over and he got back with me the next day and he was very concerned of the, the risk of how this was put together to the city and what it could mean to the city in the future for liability.
Which attorney was it, when I asked?
Quinn Plant, which is the one you guys have a contract with, so.
Oh, just curious, the reason I ask is, might have been the attorney that we worked with when we set him up in the first place?
No, I don't think Quinn Plant was there in 19, I, I, I don't know who set him up. In 1997, that was quite a while ago, so.
I was here.
So I was.
So you were a part of this?
Yes.
Were you?
Yes. I don't know who was your, your attorney back then, do you know?
Mickey Jackson's been with us forever. That's the only one that I have real familiar with.
That's Quinn Works for Mickey Jackson.
Okay.
So somebody at their mouth.
Okay.
He's the one that ran it and said this was concerning and that this was his recommendation. So it was a process of how we should eliminate these.
With that, we've given Pat the direction for the council to begin this process of developing this issue and then the work that's needed for it. And that'll begin probably in the course of between now and the next council, setting up a public hearing and getting the process underway as it, as it unfolds. With that, we'll go to resolutions and this is a resolution number 728, amending resolution number 673. Pat will present that. This also has to do with the industrial park, that's a separate issue.
So I can't remember what year this was drafted in. So this is a resolution amending resolution, resolution 728 is a resolution amending resolution 673. And what this was is, last time there was a resolution to sell property up there by the city, it did not incorporate all the property, only incorporated three or four lots. And since that we have agreed to list all the property that's available up there, I went back and modified, you know, resolution 723 modifies resolution 673, relisting all the property and the, and it provides the list attachment that you guys agreed to with the pricing on the back of it. That, that's all it's doing is this makes it more formal like it should be. And that way we can move forward and all the paperwork should be in line and we should be completely legal on, in the process we're, we're doing.
Mayor, how does, what, maybe you explained it to last meeting, but where were these lots at again?
Yeah, industrial park.
But what, what part? I mean.
Well, these are the list of all the parcels we own right here.
Oh, okay, that's all of them. Okay.
So the, the one that's down here is scratched out. That's scratched out intentionally because that's the one we're currently building on.
Okay, okay, okay.
Excuse me, question. Could we get a map that shows us what that part looks like? I know they have this.
Yeah.
Isn't it on the mayor's?
Yeah, I can get it on the office.
Yeah. Seven Hill.
Thanks, Andy.
Well, in the meantime, Mayor, I'd like to move to approve resolution 728 authorizing the surplus of public property as identified and exhibited.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 728, authorizing the surplus of public property as identified and exhibited. Any further questions or discussion? If not, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
Oh, and one abstention. Okay, one abstention. There you go.
You better hold that for standing there.
Yes.
It's a big old map, but.
Sandy?
Here's the map.
Just so you know, we took a vote?
Yeah.
You're a president.
You're aware of it, sorry.
Got it. So here's the map of the industrial park. So those are all the lots that they're, that city owns.
That includes the lots that we found, I think, I'm tired.
Can we get a smaller one?
Yeah. I don't think that we can make one up. You're welcome.
It's on your website.
Yeah, I believe it is.
Okay, very good. The next item is reported officers. And before we begin that, that process of, of calling for each house to give a, an update on different items that we're dealing with, I'd like to put a three-minute limit on each of us as we go through this so we don't run the meetings longer than they really should be. So it may be that this time may be a little bit rougher to keep that, but we need to stay at three minutes. In most cases, it's less than that, but at times it's longer and we'll just work to see if we can compress this and finish our meetings maturely. Okay? With that, we'll begin with Andy.
Good.
Kelly?
I'm good.
I just want to ask that we keep track of the housing issue here in Goldendale. It's an ongoing problem. Still see used by the Little League fields, which, you know, also involves people using those as restrooms as well. So as a public, you're using these public spaces, it has an impact on the public. So I volunteer to be part of this policy council and keep talking about it.
The housing part.
Yeah. So I would just ask the mayor and Pat and council members to just kind of track the housing opportunities that come up over the next, through this legislative session and see if there aren't some resources that come available either here locally potentially or even in the Dallas or elsewhere. Maybe we can provide transportation to help people out in need, so.
Very good. We will. Dave?
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Mayor. I brought handouts. Take one and pass it down, please. I'm going to use Steve's time also.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Well, I want to talk about Community Days a little bit. I printed this map off revisi-ly. As you know, we always close Main Street for three blocks on the Saturday of Community Days and of course the parade route during the parade. But this year, we would also like to close on Saturday only from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We want to close Columbus from Broadway to Court. And we want to close Grant from Broadway to Court. Now, a few reasons why. You know, one is a safety issue during, during the Saturday of Community Days, traffic going across Main Street on Columbus and all the pedestrians going jaywalking back and forth, little children. We think it'd be real good for the safety. Also, we're planning on having added attractions that are being planned for those areas where closing the street will make it not only more safe, but more fun. And we feel that closing the streets for those eight hours only on this Saturday will cause minimal extra disturbances and for traffic, a simple detour can be made from Court over to Chatfield north of Broadway to get around it. And so if we could get a consensus of the council or approval from the City Administrator and Mayor, that would be cool. I talked to the mayor and the City Administrator about it earlier and they suggested I bring it up to everybody.
I'm going to first, if the chief has anything to say about whether this is possible or not.
So you want to close from the intersection of Broad, on Columbus, from Broadway to Court Street? Yeah. And then from Broadway to Grant Street or all the way down to Court Street again? Yeah.
You want to close Broadway too?
No, can't close.
Oh, really? That's what you said, okay. I want to make sure.
Just the intersection.
That's a state highway. We just want to close Grant going up to Broadway, Columbus going up to Broadway.
So Mayor, I'm, I'm all good for the closure. I'm just concerned with the traffic and would propose that we table this item for the next meeting so that it can be reviewed more. Concerned with the traffic of trucks or any large vehicles going on North Chatfield?
Sure.
We can definite, I think if maybe law enforcement can come up with a plan and Public Works can come up with more signs to detour Roosevelt and have those large trucks, you know, follow that detour to Roosevelt and get across to Simcoe, staying on a larger road. But I know that in, in the past, one of the issues that is a constant is not enough signage to block the roads, being out there volunteering to block the roads and run in front of cars so that they don't run over the parade. It, it's, it's a dangerous stunt and there's not enough signage to block those roads to say, I'm going to go and jump in front of a semi.
We definitely will need to discuss this some, and I understand what you're trying to do, but closing a major thoroughfare like.
In terms of the traffic of trucks or any large vehicles going on north of Chatfield, we can definite, I think if maybe law enforcement can come up with a plan and public works can come up with more signs to detour Roosevelt and have those large trucks, you know, follow that detour to Roosevelt and get across to Simcoe staying on a larger road. But I know that in the past, one of the issues that is a constant is not enough signage to block the roads, being out there volunteering to block the roads and run in front of cars so that they don't run over the parade. It's, it's a dangerous stunt and there's not enough signage to block those roads to say, I'm going to go and jump in front of a semi.
We definitely will need to discuss this something and I understand what you're trying to do, but closing a major thoroughfare like North Columbus from Broadway to Court could be problematic, but someone, and you don't want, East Main is not incorporated this year? No, it still is. It still is. Yeah, we want this in addition. All right, so you're going to want the 100, are you going to want the 200 block of West Main?
No.
Okay, so the 100 block of West Main and you want the 100 block of East Main. Do you want to close from Broad or on, on North Chatfield, you want to close from Broadway down to East Court? Not on Chatfield. Okay, all right. So Main Street from Chatfield to Grant. Yes, that's what's going on.
But you want, you're going to accomplish.
Yes. Yeah, same as last year from the general store there, Chatfield all the way to Grant. Okay. Yeah.
I would support that just by the fact of all the pedestrians.
Oh, yeah, they do. Yeah, they got a bunch of stuff.
Even without the, even without the other attractions, but just.
We go get it again. Yeah.
Just to move the traffic away.
Then we'll, we'll have this on the agenda for the next city council meeting to hopefully finalize it for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mayor, I think also the public works can be on on that so that, because they can detour out on, what is it, like over here where Athens is?
Washington.
Washington, yeah. If they can detour over there, any semis or traffic coming 142 this way and detour them across the street to.
Yeah, public works.
You know, around.
Work that out.
Yeah.
So this will, this will go again next week.
Okay, great, thank you.
Two weeks. Steve?
Well, Pat, I would like to make an update regarding some of the things we discussed in the last public works meeting, such as weed control. And would like to know when you're going to be ready to present this with some kind of direction regarding the utility rates.
I wanted to get your back, so I just had to hear that, sorry. Yeah, I'm actually drafting that up as we speak.
Which one?
The rate. The rate, yeah. So.
And weed control, I mean, spring's coming at us.
Yeah.
And we discussed this to death. We're ready, is there a big kind of program, any kind of move?
Well, we, we got it organized. We'll have to go back through the ordinance, probably make it a little bit tougher, but my recommendation would be, you know, this is going to talk, have to talk to some of the legal, our legal counsel a little bit about too, about, you know, last year I was here, I seen a lot of letters go out and a lot of letters not picked up that had to do with weed control. There's always those ones who more willing to comply and other ones who don't want to pick up their notice because in that way they can deny they didn't get their notice. Also, we have to do is show proof that we tried to reasonably, reasonably deliberate. My recommendation is to draft a code, some type of code up that can be legally binding that, that if they don't do it, we would probably have to, this is why I need to talk to attorney, I don't think there's any way other to do it, to go get what's called a warrant of abatement. And then we would go in there and mow it and then wing the property. But currently, we do not have that process.
Well, that's what it was referring to. We need that process.
We need that process, yeah.
We need that process.
But we need it simplified too.
And we need it simplified, yes, yes. Now, your attempt to notify the property owners, do you do certified mail? How do you do that?
They do certified mail, yeah.
And regular. We send two letters to the same address.
Yeah. My recommendation would be to sir, send certified mail and post the property vote on four sides and then you take photos of that, time state photos saying that you've made every reasonable effort to contact the property owners.
Okay, well, and you know, I mentioned the weed control, but it will tie into our nuisance ordinances, our abatement of dangerous buildings, all of that, you know, and we've, we've talked about this a lot.
We have.
We've talked it to death and it'd be nice to see some movement.
One of the biggest problems I see is we have that wild rye and it really grew last year and I assume with the moisture we had, it's going to do very good again this year. And it's a nuisance and also a very car danger. So I really think we're.
Well, like, yeah, rye grass is extremely hard to get rid of. The only way you're going to get rid of that is if somebody wicks it, you know what I mean by wicking it? You're going to have to choke it out or it'll just keep coming back. I mean, it's up to, I guess, the property owner, what they want to do. If they want to continue mowing it or not mowing it, if it was my property, I would be wicking the rye with a wicker. Basically, what you're doing is when it comes up to seed, you're, you're wicking the tops of it with a chemical that kill the seeds, so want a seed that won't grow back. And it, it'll take several years to get it all choked out, but they can choke it out if, if they just keep on top of wicking it every year. So once they wick it, they let it sit for seven days and then they can take it, you know, then mow it down and the seeds won't grow.
Well, I, I have seen the city spray.
Yeah, yeah. Spray is not, you, you really got to, when it comes to rye, this is, I grew up farm, so you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, very much, very much.
I mean, you, you got to wicked to get rid of it.
Yeah, no, it's pretty, pretty hardy.
Should have public works advantage or public spaces to those, well, airport.
Yes.
Ditch bar, the new ground up on buyers, watching that bare ground, make sure that was seeded and it comes up to land, otherwise it's going to be all weeds, so.
Lead by example. Okay, and we can have a meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
What time? Three o'clock?
Three o'clock? Okay. I'll try to dig it.
And one other thing that I mentioned is that in our, in our committee meeting, the curb paint, the yellow stripes, I noticed, well, we've not done too bad, but we have some areas where it's so bad, it's almost gone.
On the curbs?
On the curbs.
Okay.
Yes.
We usually paint them once a year.
No.
Well, that's because we couldn't get street paint, so it's been an issue with.
The curves I'm talking about haven't been painted for 30 years, so one year without paint is, is not going.
You'll have to let us know which those are because I know the public works crew has a map that, that they use when they paint, so.
The oldest streets are the worst. Some of our new recent street projects, not bad, depending what you do, but then that's last time they get painted for decades. So, I mean, there is some, I see some areas where they have painted those curves, but this is, applies to traffic control and pedestrian safety.
So I, maybe you can get with me early tomorrow and take me out and show me what you're looking at, so. I, it, it's hard for me to answer your question when I'm not sure exactly what you're, I'm glad to talk, talking about, so.
Well, overall, overall, it's not looking too bad, but there are a number of areas that have been neglected for decades. And that's all painted here, here are.
We'll go now to Marlon Walling and then to Phil.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor. Well, I wanted to make a comment that either, I think it was last Friday or the Friday before, we finally, the mayor and I and, and we worked on the CDS federal grant money, this is for the airport, and we worked on to the very last minute when it had, when it was due to be in. And I want to also thank Richard and Nicole and Dean, they also helped us out. We were all working together, they were working at home and the mayor and I was in the office and we finally got the request in. Now, we don't know if we're going to get the, the grant money, but then it went into Senator Campbell's office and also Congressman Newhouse's office. We don't know, it'll be this fall, I believe, before we know if we're accepted, but then at least we, but there was a deadline and we had to get it in and, and the mayor did a good job of getting that in, so anyway, that's what I have here.
Phil?
I was just going to bring up along the, the yellow striping, we can have the public works department look at Golden between Main and Court. I know we have a brand new parking lot right there, but a couple of weeks ago, there were some people parked there. I was quite surprised that they couldn't go up 100 feet and use the parking lot, but I made that, that street is very narrow there. Otherwise, I'd use, be on my three minutes back to Dave and see if he has anything else to do with community days.
Main and what was the other street?
Between Court.
On Golden between Main and Court. Right before the brand new parking lot.
Do you know of the, is the street by code eliminate parking on that street?
I would say so because it is very narrow, like you park one car there and you can barely fit another car around it. But that's just from my.
Is this the one they just didn't work on, reconstructed?
It's right next to the fire department. On the side of the offices. You have the storage units on Main, on Court and Golden, and then you have the parking lot on Main and Golden. But it, that, that street is very narrow either way, but like I said, if they would have gone 100 feet, there's a whole 50 spots right there. But I don't. Yeah, it's narrow.
Thanks, everyone. We'll probably have some refresher courses in three minutes, but we're getting close to it. Pat, did you have anything more on your side?
I need a big timer.
You did or did not?
I, I did not.
Okay, okay, we'll go on now to open public comment. I imagine K V H wants to say something.
Somehow I thought we were on the agenda, but I don't, I don't know, Barb keeps me in order and she said she's not here, so if, I, I never got her first for you guys to get the agenda.
Oh, okay, yeah, I, I thought she did, but there must, we have 22 meetings in five weeks, so maybe this is the one that fell through the, the cracks. But if you could take, just, you know, each and passing around and we're just going to just take three minutes to go over a project, our building project.
Just your name and where you're.
Yes, perfect. I'm Leslie Giver, I'm the administrator and superintendent for the public hospital district of Kiket County, number one, K V H. So this is the, essentially the same proposal that we had last time and most of you are here for a pretty thorough presentation, so we're just going to give you a little update. I also have Erin Woolley, who is our C N O, our chief nursing officer here, so she can answer nursing questions. Larry Harker is one of our commissioners and then John Lewis, who is our interim facilities. So it's local long-term care, updating our surgery unit and new short-term state beds. As you guys know, we're a public hospital district. We are the community's hospital, we're essentially owned by the people that pay the property taxes for the district and so it really is your hospital. And we've had the support of the city in so many projects that we've done in the past and this is just getting this over the finish line. We were 29 votes short of getting this passed last time. It requires a super majority of 60% and we are at 59% plus, so we're almost there. So I'm just going to let Erin talk a little bit about from a nursing perspective, why we need, you know, some of these clinical spaces.
So as you all know, there are two spaces at K V H that have not been updated since they were built in 1949, so that's our, our operating rooms and our acute care wing right now. So I would like to, just if you'll indulge me, I'd like to ask for a show of hands, how many of you enjoy sharing a bathroom with three strangers? Not very many of you, and that's kind of the challenge that we have right now on our acute care space. So where people would stay overnight, folks that have pneumonia, folks that have COVID, folks that have a diabetic concern would stay on our med surg unit overnight for a couple of nights and those rooms were built to be semi-private rooms with shared bathrooms between two rooms, so four people sharing one toilet. This presents quite a few challenges for us for any patient that's in isolation because we need to take not just the room that that patient is in and the, and the other bed in that room out of service, we also have to take the adjoining room out of service so that we can prevent any sort of cross-contamination and prevent, you know, having somebody that already came in sick get sick with an infectious disease. So with only a few rooms to spare, when we have to take an extra room out of service, this really cuts down on the number of beds that we have available for patients. The other thing that we're looking to do is we want to use our current acute care med surg space to make that 15 long-term care beds, so these would be nursing home beds. As you all know, there are no long-term care beds in this county, so when we have a loved one who needs 24/7 custodial nursing care, there is no place in Kiket County for that person to go. And that creates a challenge as we try to get our loved one's place. Recently, I've had to place a patient in Tacoma, we're looking to place patients in Spokane, and so this is a long drive for those of you that have a loved one that now needs to go stay in long-term care. And then just finally, we need a new O R space. I think one of the biggest reasons, and I hadn't thought about this originally, but we plugged in a lot less equipment in 1949 than we plug in now in those O Rs and we don't have the electrical capabilities for all of the new technology that we're using when we do surgery, so this update would give us a new O R space. We have three wonderful surgeons, we've got a full team of O R staff and we're ready to crank out some surgeries, but we need some new space to do that, so those would be the three highlights I'd like to share.
The cost is 79 cents per thousand if you're a property owner, it shows up on your property tax statement. We do have a property tax credit, so if you use services at K V H and a portion of that is a, shows up as a private pay bill for you, you can bring in your property tax statement and that will be credited to your bill. So for some people, that's a net zero impact, but that's, that's the project. Do you have any questions for us? Again, apologize that we didn't get on the agenda.
Any questions for K V H?
I, I do want to mention our aging population, which I'm sure you see, you all see, we, if you're over the age of 65, you're four times more likely to be hospitalized and the demographics in our community are definitely aging and we have, you know, we've done all the reports, all the consultants, all the facility needs assessments to show what do we need today, but also what, this is a bond for 20 years, so we need to make sure that we're planning not just for today, but for, for the future of our community as well. So, thank you, thank you for your, for your time. And if you have any questions, feel free to call us, we're. And we have, we do have a town hall meeting scheduled for March 28th at 6:00 p.m. at the Grange, the Golden Dog Grange, so if you think of something before now and then, you can always call me or you can come to the, to the town hall meeting.
Do you have some hard words here?
Oh, yeah, I do, actually. The other way to get rid of rye is to pull it. We did a lot of pulling rye in the field. Right, Larry?
Yeah, yeah, me too, but I didn't like that one. That's just one step above milking cows.
I had rye in the front of our home and it costs thousands of dollars to get it all dug up and thrown away and gravel came in, it doesn't come back, but it cost a fortune to get rid of it. We really need to stop this as quick as we can, as thoroughly as we can.
Makes good bread. Does it work to burn?
Anybody else for public comment? Anybody online for public comment? Nope.
If not, we need a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
Who did second to adjourn? City council for March. March 21st. All in.